Okay, good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. There is a copy of the Open Meetings Act located on the north wall of the legislative chambers, and there's also an automatic defibrillator available at the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Health Center Board of Trustees, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Duda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will call to order this meeting of the Douglas County Board of Trustees being conducted in compliance with Nebraska's open meetings laws. Burl, would you please call the roll? President?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. This is our monthly update on how the HMA recommendations are progressing, and we turn to our Director of Long-Term Care, Jim Tourville. Good morning, Jim.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, trustees. I did send out the HMA update to you just prior to the meeting today. I apologize for not getting it out earlier, but if -- and there's also a copy at your place where you're sitting, if you'd refer to that. The first one is the electronic health record. We have interviewed all the candidates that were deemed to be appropriate for our -- to meet our needs. We've selected Meditech as the vendor that we'd like to ultimately have your approval to enter into an agreement with. What we want to do is ask your approval to put it on next week's agenda for the county board meeting and ask for approval at that time by the commissioners. We have the money that's -- the money is encumbered for the first year cost for electronic health record system, and the health center, Community Mental Health Center and primary health care, the departments that have the money encumbered. We're not signing anything at all today, or it would only be next Tuesday if you do allow us to go ahead and proceed with that bid. We're looking for the kickoff of the electronic health record to be started in July of this year, and if you have any questions about funding, Joe Lorenz up there does have some answers for you regarding that. And also Diane Wallace is in the audience today if you wish to ask any specific questions of her. We certainly can do that. Item number two, regarding the laundry bids, we have a meeting with EULA, Employees United Labor Association, this coming Thursday at 10:00, and the purpose of that meeting is to meet with them and go over the bids and answer any questions that they might have. We did receive two bid proposals for that service to the health center, and we'll meet with the union and go over it, make sure we answer all their questions prior to taking any action on that. Short-term rehab is scheduled to open shortly. We have not set a date yet. We don't want to announce that yet until we're ready to get it out there and start doing some PR on it, but it's very, very soon, and it will be in July. Also, Dr. Brenda Keller, she's a geriatric physician from the Nebraska Medical Center. She has agreed to be our medical director for short-term rehab. She knows the business, she knows the regulations, she knows what's required of Medicare, required by Medicare, and Medicaid, all third-party payers, so I think it'll be a great asset. She brings a lot to the table already. She does care for residents at the health center, has been doing that for several years, but she also does serve as medical director at another short-term rehab facility in town. So just wanted to share that with you. And then the last I've got for you is that we have been having meetings with various groups and agencies throughout the community regarding the short-term rehab unit. We've had meetings with the Nebraska Medical Center, with Methodist, and also some home health agencies in the community, select rehab. So we are continuing to work to get the word out regarding the facility. Everyone who comes and takes a look at it is very impressed with the renovation and also the furnishings that we have for them, for their patients in the rooms that we have, and I think it'll be a real success. So we're trying to work collaboratively with the hospitals in town, other entities, so they will feel comfortable about making referrals to us, and we can be of service to them as well, and the citizens of our communities. Any questions? I'll be very glad to address those and answer them for you.
Trustee Borges.
Jim, can we take the spreadsheet?
That --
That color-coded, that list out by category?
Yes, and I was to tell you that it'll be here next month.
Okay, good.
We're working on it, and Dee Dee will have it ready for you for next month.
And then --
The spreadsheet.
And then we'll also maybe -- because the last time we had kind of a short meeting to discuss which ones we would bring forward again, or on.
Which ones you had prioritized next.
Yeah, so we probably need to look at that again, too, and decide how close we are to bringing those.
Sure. So would you want me to bring a -- send out a copy of the recommendations as well, then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they'll be on the matrix, but still, if you want.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
So which ones do we move -- which ones have we completed? Which ones are we going to move forward with next?
Okay. We can do that. Very good.
Great.
We'll have that for you for next month.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miranda.
And just a reminder, there's a Board of Trustees meeting at 9:00 next Monday.
The regular monthly meeting. Thank you.
I won't be here. I'll be on town.
Okay. Trustee Boyle?
Yes, Jim. Number five, where you've met with several groups about the services that are being offered. Could you mention, do those include recovery from orthopedic surgery, things like that?
They do. They do. With surgeons who are -- who would make referrals to us, their nurses and discharge planners in their offices.
Okay. Well, I might suggest, you know, there's an orthopedic hospital on 144th, and there's some other specialty clinics around that you may want to make contact with them as well, just see if they have any interest. That'd be great.
Excellent. We'll do that.
Thanks.
Thank you for the suggestion.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay. That will conclude, then. Did you have anything you want to be sharing, Chandra? Oh, simply, Chandra's the one doing the outreach, and she's simply acknowledging they are trying to make contact with your suggestions, Commissioner Boyle. Sherry, did you have anything to be sharing this morning? You're not on the agenda, just wanted to make sure. Fine. Okay, then thank you for the debate.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Under Citizens' comments, I have a letter that I've been requested to read into the record from our old friend, Rob Rebold. We haven't heard from him in a while. I knew Rob long ago, and he was actually an Omaha police officer as part of -- he's had quite a career, but he did ask if I would read this into the record. "My name is Rob Rebold, and I live at 7063 Carnual Point Avenue in Omaha. I'm writing this letter for many reasons, and hopefully it may be read to the community of Douglas County. First and foremost, I would like to commend and congratulate the fine job the chairman and the Douglas County Board of Commissioners have provided for the continued support and effort to make this community a better place to live. My second and very important thank you on behalf of myself and other citizens of this community is to the fine, ongoing job that the Douglas County Health Center is doing for the citizens of this community, which includes the poor, individuals who need mental health services, and especially a home that the elderly can call home, and I do mean home, with which the Health Center provides quality care for all of these individuals. Mr. Tourville and Sherry Glassnap have been administrators of both the Health Center and also the Community Mental Health Center." Mr. Tour -- Mr. Tourville -- oh, the rats. I tried to read all this ahead of time. Mr. Tourville --
He's a great guy.
Over the course of many years, thank you, has provided, along with hundreds of employees under him, the compassion and leadership of a fine administrator of the Health Center, as has Sherry Glassnap, administrator of the Community Mental Health Center. A health center can't exist without fine employees who are dedicated and work for the county. These individuals are nurses, doctors, dietary aides, nursing assistants, security officers, and switchboard operators. Let it always be remembered, all the individuals provide the quality and the lifestyle of what we eventually want to achieve when we get old. I am elderly myself, disabled, and many years ago worked at Douglas County when it was one of Omaha's biggest primary operating hospitals. Douglas County Health Center has gone a long way for improvements, which continues to this date, and I humbly would ask all of you commissioners to vote on a resolution to better the Douglas County Health Center and its employees awarded accordingly to their everyday endeavor for making this such a fine facility. My respects to you all, Rob Rebold." So, thank you. Are there any other citizens' comments for the trustees?
If I could just share one thing with you. Rob always calls the Health Center and informs PBX, and if I'm available, he does call me and tell me as well regarding inclement weather is coming, storms, things like that, so he's in tune with the weather and keeps us posted, so just keep everybody safe.
So he's been pretty busy lately, I would guess.
He's been busy. And a good guy, he really is, so.
Nice.
Just wanted to share that with you.
It was good to hear from him again. He used to be a regular in corresponding with us, and hadn't heard from him in years, so. If there's no other citizens' comments, that brings us to the end of the agenda, and we will stand adjourned. I return the floor to you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll wait just a minute while we change seats. Morning. We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, June 17, 2014, and Item B, call for a meeting set July 1, 2014, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rule or increased value on property.
Motion approved, MB.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Next is Citizen Comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Good morning.
Thank you. Jim Thompson, 101 South 35th Avenue. I'm here on behalf of Chairman of the PAP NRD, Fred Conley. You folks will begin a letter from Mr. Conley stating basically what I'm going to be reading. Madam Chairperson, during the June 17, 2014 Board of Equalization meeting, several statements were made by members regarding the PAP NRD dam site 15A. The district would like to take this opportunity to correct statements that would purported as fact and provide the commissioners with correct information. Lower the false statements that were made, and the correct information follows. Item 1, the district is taken on by eminent domain for tearing down private homes. While the district has the authority to use eminent domain for projects such as PAP Dam Site 15A, the district has not exercised that authority to date. District makes every attempt to negotiate with property owners to avoid eminent domain. Also, the district will acquire approximately 725 acres for this project. Only one home will be impacted due to this project, and the homeowner is compensated for the loss and relocation expenses. Item 2 has stated that the district is selling lakefront lots for $750. Our land acquired for the dam site 15A project will remain in public ownership by either the district or the city of Omaha. No land has been, will be, nor has ever been contemplated to be sold to developers. In fact, state statute requires any project over 20 service acres be 100% open to the public for their use and benefit. Item 3, the district was granted $3 billion bonding authority by the legislature for these projects. By state statute, the district's bonding authority is limited 1 cent of its maximum 4.5 cents per $100 in property valuation taxing authority. At current property valuation, this is approximately $75 million. Statement 4, the PAP Dam Site 15 project is partially within Douglas County. The response, the entire 725 acres that were acquired for this project is within the city of Omaha's extraterritorial jurisdiction. Douglas County has no zoning authority over this project. Finally, there were 37 of 42 dams in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, that failed during a rain event. After research and personally, our staff personally speaking with authorities in Iowa, no one can remember such an event ever occurring.
Excuse me.
Above statements are patently false and have no basis in fact or reality. It is unfortunate that this type of misinformation has made its way into public discussion and quite simply serves no other interests than to confuse the public and cause unnecessary conflict. This is our sincere hope that this letter clarifies the facts of the situation surrounding Dam Site 15A project, and that has educated each individual commissioner and the county board as a whole. Our programs and projects are designed to protect life and property and to work with the communities within our district to enhance protection of citizens and the natural resources and critical infrastructure that resides in each jurisdiction. Douglas County has availed itself to many NRD programs in the past, and doors are always open to further cooperation and partnership. Unfortunately, recent storms have demonstrated property, and more importantly, life, are still at risk in our watersheds. I also, as a person, want to clarify the situation in memory of David Farr, age 29 forever, a flood victim last Friday. We build these flood control structures to protect life and property. I wish David Farr were here to address this board and your inappropriate decision to remove our government land from the tax rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I would be glad to briefly respond to the remarks. We had taxpayers, homeowners, come to this podium and asking, pleading for our help because the NRD was threatening to take their homes up in northwest Douglas County to build a lake. And so eminent domain is used and can be used, and is a real threat if you don't do what the NRD wants done. So it's a threat. And I did read in the World Herald, I'll have to get the site, and I'll send it to you, Mr. Thompson, that the lakefront lots were going to be sold for $750 apiece. They could have made a mistake, but I'm not sure that the World Herald would, you know, print a retraction, but maybe they would. And also, you know, you have a history of building these lakes and then not permitting taxpayers on the water. I don't know which lake it is, but someone here maybe can refresh my memory. Which one is it?
I think you're talking about the Bennington.
Right, the Bennington area that isn't even a functioning lake, because apparently you did, or maybe you still have to pump water into the lake to keep the level up, which is a pretty bizarre situation. But also, the public is not allowed on that lake, and we paid for it, and that is disturbing. So also, you know, we had a -- when LB-160 was debated in the legislature, we were throwing a bone that actually was plastic. It wasn't real. The bone was that we had veto authority over any of these projects that were exclusively in our jurisdiction, and none of these projects are exclusively in our jurisdiction. So the amendment was a farce, and I knew it at the time, but we couldn't really get any traction with the state senators, because all you ever heard was what Mr. Thompson said at the end, "We're trying to save lives. You don't want to be responsible for a flood." So it was difficult, it was actually impossible, to get LB-160 stopped. The bonding authority is a huge burden on the taxpayers of the NRD, and it's a silent kind of bond expense, tax expense, that's tacked onto our property taxes. While all of us are fighting, trying to keep spending down, the NRD has this huge bonding authority to go out and build these lakes that are used for development. I'll be very surprised if that doesn't have a lot of homes around that lake. I just can't see that happening. As for the failure of the dams in Cedar Rapids, it is a fact. It's a book written about it. I've got it in my office. And I spoke to the chair of the Lynn County, or at least a member of the Lynn County, Iowa Board of Commissioners, and she substantiated what it says in the book, that when the heavy rains hit Cedar Rapids, that these dams already had water in them, and so when the heavy rains came, they were useless. They filled up and went over the top and sometimes breached, much like Pigeon Creek up in Dakota County. Complete failure of a levee, I believe, that was built by the NRD that has had little publicity. But some of us have received photographs of the damage that took place, and the remark by the NRD was, "Well, that was just rule. Nothing happened, no people up there." So it was kind of interesting that remark was made. Also, I'm curious about the World Herald depiction of this land, the comment about when the county board denied it. It said that the NRD was renting the land out for farming, and I think, seems to me that that income would make this project not exempt for being exempt from property taxes if you're making money on it and it's not part of your operations. It's not a governmental operations to farm, that I heard. I don't think the NRD has, in its statutory authority, farming. Maybe it does, but if you don't, then you're clearly not exempt. And finally, I guess what I'd say is, you know, a long-going argument that I've had, and this board has had with the NRD, is that these dams don't stop flooding. They just don't. They're filled with water already. When a big rain hits, they top. And so we would like to see other means used, and there have been some things that the city has done, in Elmwood Park and other parts of the city of Omaha, to slow down water and make it gradually go into the ground, the earth, and in a natural way that doesn't require all this maintenance and all the other things that happen with dams. So I don't think you're exempt, particularly if you're farming, and I'd like to hear more about that. And if we go to Turk, I'll see that we go down there and present the information to Turk that you're actually farming and making money off this property, apparently. So we'll find out. We don't get a lot of information from you, but -- and we'd like to open up communications. I think it'd be a good idea to hear from you occasionally, and it's our fault, too. We need to communicate better with you. But that was my rationale behind all this.
And Commissioner Boyle, we will be having a presentation on that dam site, and we're just getting, working on scheduling it, and so that we are informed completely by them on what's going on. Because you're right, I mean, there needs to be better communication. I think that this project has moved along really without any conversation with us until this point. So there is a little portion of the dam site that is within our jurisdiction, but the majority of it is in the city of Omaha's jurisdiction. But we'll get that scheduled. I know they're willing to come and provide us that information, and what I think this board struggles with is when this conversation occurred a few years ago, we went and worked with Washington County to come up with our own set of rules and regulations that were different than what these are, what the dams were, projects were, and so we need to see whether or not any, all or any of that will mesh with this project with our rules and regs. So we can continue the conversations, and we will, so I'll get that scheduled as soon as I can.
Okay, and I've given thought to this, and I hesitate to respond to this specifically, but about the individual who drowned in Sarpy County, was a young man, and according to the World Herald, he was attempting to get out of deep water and made a mistake and turned into a ditch, and then got out of his car. There's nothing that the NRD could have done to prevent that death, so the idea that this is somehow your mission is to prevent things like that happening is just, it's really disgusting that you would even bring that up, to tell you the truth.
Okay. We will move on to resolutions. There are five resolutions.
Motion approved and adjourned.
Second.
Any questions or comments on the resolutions? Please vote. We will move to the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, June 17, 2014, and Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, June 24, 2014.
Motion approved, MB.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Consent agenda. There are 11 items, A through K. Please note on item H that we are removing items four and five.
Motion approved.
Second. Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to make a comment about item A. This claim that was filed on behalf of Laura Knigley was a wage claim. Sometimes we -- I think it's important that we make that clear, that this is not some auto accident or some other --
Oh, okay.
That it's a wage claim, and if we could get that information into these resolutions on this agenda, it'd be helpful.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, no other questions or comments? Please vote. Next is a resolution and proclamation, a sympathy resolution, to the family of William Bill Bosneck, Sr. And I was contacted upon the passing of Mr. Bosneck, and I don't believe anyone made it to the board meeting today, but I would like to read the resolution into the record. Whereas it was "With great sadness that the Douglas County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Valley Fire Department member and former Douglas County Sheriff's Office employee William Bill Bosneck, Sr. on June 17, 2014, at the age of 70. And whereas Mr. Bosneck is survived by his wife Carol, five children, Bill, Jim, Teresa, Madonna, and by eight, Scott, and eight grandchildren. Whereas Mr. Bosneck pursued a career in public safety and worked in the Douglas County Sheriff's under the former sheriff Ted Channing, and became known as the voice of the low-band emergency radio communication systems during the late 1970s. And whereas he worked at the Douglas County Sheriff's Office Communications Chief until the city and county 911 merged, as well served for many years as an active member of the Douglas County Sheriff's Office Reserve Unit. And whereas in 1986, Mr. Bosneck became a firefighter with the City of Valley Fire and Rescue Department, and throughout his many years with the department, contributed his invaluable knowledge, skills, and abilities to his fellow firefighters and to his department. And whereas Mr. Bosneck became the president of the Valley Fire Department and remained in his position until his passing. And whereas this board recognizes that Mr. Bosneck dedicated his time and livelihood to improving the lives of the Douglas County residents, and that his passing has caused great sadness to his families, friends, and to our community. Now therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby commemorates the public service contributions of Mr. William Bill Bosneck, Sr., and does hereby extend the board's sincere sympathies to his family and friends."
Motion approved.
Please vote. And we will get a copy of that resolution to the family. Thank you. We have a public -- or Citizen Comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to public hearings. We have a preliminary plot request application for 203rd Plaza LLC, care of Mr. Frank Creche. The preliminary plot request of Forest Glen, a proposed residential subdivision consisting of 21 residential lots and outlots, A and B, in the northeast 1/4, northeast 1/4, Section 9, Township 14, North Range, 10 east of the 6PM, address general location 5455 South 245th Street, as part of the former Catholic Church Camp Retreat Center property. Action can be taken today if the board so desires, once a public hearing is held and closed. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Doug Cook, your planning and zoning coordinator. This item, as you mentioned, is a preliminary plot for 21 residential lots and two outlots. And I do have some slides here that I'd like to show you if I can. My nerves calmed down here a little bit. Okay, this is the property right here. I would point out, it is just the northerly part of the old Eldon Curtis Church Camp. All the existing buildings that are in the church camp, the pool, those are not included in this part of the plot. So there is kind of a ravine. You can see it right here. This proposed subdivision is on the north side of the ravine. Additionally, the applicant does own some property along the Elkhorn River. That also is not a part of this subdivision. Okay, we'll just do this. All right, here's the comp plan, a large view of the comp plan. We are -- this is very small, so let's go to this next slide. Here we are down here. Here's the Elkhorn River. This would be the area right here, right off of 245th Street. It is adjacent to and physically touches Southampton subdivision, which is crucial It is adjacent to and physically touches Southampton subdivision, which is crucial here. I know this is kind of light to see, but at the end of Southampton's rigging here, there is a roundabout. Their proposal is to keep that roundabout, so it will serve as a traffic calming device. And then, they have two streets, one street heading northwest, and then a street heading north from that. There is about 13 acres of green space here. The zoning requires about 10. They have met and exceeded that. The green space in this area will physically connect to part of the green space in Southampton. So, one of the goals of our comp plan and our zoning regs is that the green space be contiguous, that you don't have these isolated parcels. So, if you are walking the green space in Southampton, you can keep on walking around this area. It also connects on the bottom here with some additional green space. So, that is a good thing. Also, up in this area, where the church camp has a wonderful view shed, there's a cross up there, and I have some pictures of, from that view. Obviously, you can see by this that the property is extensively treed. So, they will have to take some trees out to put the streets in, but otherwise, the trees will be undisturbed. And a good thing that they are doing here is that they are building their roads on the ridges, so there'll be minimum disturbance. Additionally, they are proposing rural section streets. There will not be curb and gutter, so it'll be like, well, rural streets. I mean, they'll just drain off into a road ditch. There won't be any point source discharge. So, from a stormwater standpoint, we like that. So, here are some slides of the property. This is the cul-de-sac or the roundabout at the Southampton's. Their new road will be heading off in this direction. And as I mentioned, they will keep this. Here is an existing road or trail. This is where their proposed road will be. You can see, it's on the ridgeline. There will be some trees taken out, but not a massive amount of trees. Looks like a lot of properties in Douglas County there, but I assure you, that's from this property. Here is the road going north. Here again, the road will be on the ridgeline. This is one of the neat parts of this property, and this is the, the view shed. So, they are preserving this. This is in the green space. So, anyone who lives there or walks that area can get to this. And so, the views are just spectacular from there. So, I couldn't help myself, and I had to take some pictures from there. And then, as required by the zoning, or the zoning regulations, they did post a sign, and there's the sign right there. And for maximum visibility, instead of putting it at the cul-de-sac there by the Southampton's, where very few people would see it, we put it down. So, even though this technically isn't on this particular property, this is where the maximum visibility would be. They also sent about 180-some letters to adjacent property owners, and we had a decent turnout of neighbors. So, I don't want to go over the staff report with you, because I don't think I need to do that. So, if you have any questions for me, I sure would be glad to address those. The applicant is here, along with his representative.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against the project? Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jim Lang. I'm an attorney here in Omaha at 11718 Nicholas Street. I represent the applicant in this, for the preliminary plat, which is 203rd Plaza LLC. The principal in 203rd Plaza LLC is Frank Creachy. Frank is with me today, and also with me today is Mark Westergaard of E&amp;A Consulting. Mark and his firm are the engineers and designers of the, of the subdivision, Forest Glen. Doug Cook did a great job of setting forth the, the subdivision and the improvements of the subdivision with the pictures for you, so I'll be very brief. Once again, it's, there are 33 acres, 21 lots, so the density is very low. It's about a 1.1 and 1/2 lots per acre. Once again, as Doug mentioned, we have developed this from a conservation design, and I think E&amp;A's done a real, really nice job of doing that, preserving the natural beauty of the area, and at the same time, minimizing the impact on the area for the improvements consisting of the streets. And the water's going to be, MUD water sewer's going to be connected with sewer with the Southampton's. So, we have all the, the major improvements, but at the same time, we have the conservation design aspect of this particular subdivision, which enhances and, and maintains the beauty of the area. The planning board of Douglas County did recommend approval. Once again, this area is also very consistent with the surrounding area of Southampton's and these particular areas. So, at this time, we're asking for preliminary plat approval from the Douglas County Board. If you have any questions, to myself, Mark Westergaard, or Frank Creachy, we'd be happy to answer those questions. Thank you very much.
Jim, I know this isn't a question, it's more of a comment. I do appreciate the conversation that was had at the planning board with the neighbors, and just so that they are kept abreast of what's going on. I think that really helped with having that conversation. So, as we move forward after the preliminary, if those could continue, just to, we've had a lot of problems in that area, and actually, we see that this development would potentially decrease that activity that has been out there. So, at least that's what I'm hoping, so.
No, we'll continue to have the conversation with the property owners, keep them informed. Basically, from, I think it's from the Vista, what is it, Town, Twin River Vista subdivision. We met with some of the members after the meeting. I think we had a very productive conversation with them. They pointed out the problems. I think we have a solution to the problem.
Yep.
And we're going to pursue that. But in addition, when you develop an area and bring some additional residents into the area, especially in this particular subdivision, it's going to be an upper-end type of a, of a real, single-family residential subdivision. I think you're going to, in effect, minimize the impact that's out there right now. But we'll continue to visit with the neighbors on that.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
I don't have a question that I, as you went through this, Mr. Lang, it's very, it's really obvious that it, in my opinion, it's a, really an excellent use of the land, and I, I think the design has really respected the terrain and the trees, and I like the treatment of the stormwater. It's a much better way to do things than having all this water go through gutters and into wherever the heck they go. But it is, it really is an excellent design, and I think it's something that will, it's a real great addition, wonderful. Very impressed with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no other questions or comments? Again, anyone from the public? I'll close the public hearing.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to the committees, the first being the finance.
Thank you, Sam, very much.
There's two items.
Go ahead, PJ.
As presented, I don't think we have anything, do we, Joe? That we need to be addressing at this point?
Well, just that next week, we're scheduled to have the public hearing on the budget. At next week's meeting.
And I do think it's important to mention that we've seen the White Paper from the Taxpayers for Freedom and some of their articles. It's important to talk about the fact that, I believe, over the last four years, four budgets, we have maintained only one out of the four years to have a mill of a increase. And that's our goal for this year. We appreciate the department heads, elected officials, and others working with us to achieve that. And again, I've said it privately and publicly, I want to thank all the commissioners for constantly participating in all the budget discussions, plus illegal women voters, Doug Kagan, his group, because it's good to have that kind of input, and that we're not just operating quietly, in the background, getting a budget put together. And Madam Chairman, I want to thank you for all of your support and help to the Budget Committee. Claire, thank you very much.
Been a good process.
Good process.
If I may briefly add, in addition to the public hearing on the budget next week, hopefully, we will be voting on the budget as well. So, thank you.
And with that, there is a year-end write-down of uncollectible accounts receivable. Commissioner Boyle?
I just wanted to ask if, in looking at it, some of the write-offs, and I see that it's, some of this is PBX and so forth, this is, at the Douglas County Health Center, it's a write-off for uncollectible fees to other governmental bodies or nonprofits?
Yeah, yeah, let me clarify, and we have one little change coming, too. As you can see, the great majority of the write-offs relate to the landfill site and a number of firms who really have, for the most part, have gone out of business and are no longer doing business at the landfill site. These receivables are three to four years old, so under our accounting guidelines, we're going to write down close to $74,000 of those. The second piece relates to the PBX system and billing under the city-county Centrex contract. And I would make a note here that I received a phone call yesterday from the Finance Director at Mecca, who told me that there was a misunderstanding, and really wanted to work to try and resolve the $8,300 worth of receivables we're looking to write down from Mecca. So, I'm going to pull that from, from this sheet, so that the net write-down that we're looking at is now $84,000. But to your point, Commissioner Boyle, these relate to the city, these agencies have used phone numbers under the city-county phone contract, and our position has always been is, if you're going to come in and get the pricing offered under the city-county phone contract, that you would have to pay your fair share of the Centrex operation based on the number of lines. And so, that's what these charges relate to. And in the case of the job training of Greater Omaha, that was a grant, I think, administered by the city. That's expired, and there's no funding left on that. As I said, we're trying to work with Mecca, and my understanding is that the Durham Museum has said that they're not getting any benefit under the PBX service, so they don't think they should pay for it.
Well, that's kind of, you mean, their phones aren't ringing? Is that what they're saying?
That...
Do they ever get any phone calls?
That, I didn't have that conversation personally with them, but that's been their position.
They say they don't get a benefit out of the PBX operations when someone answers the phone and they get a call referred to them. Kind of an odd position. I'd like to have something in writing from them to...
Yeah, and I think we're going to go back, because our position has always been that if you're not willing to share in the benefits of the city-county Centrex contract, then you should opt out and go get your own phone lines at your own, and not enjoy the benefits of the pricing offered through the city-county contract.
I would agree with you, to the extent that that does not apply to governmental offices. That we can't have an office going off and saying, "We're going to buy our own," like the, say, the Assessor Register of Deeds, saying, "You know, we're going to buy our own." That can't happen. But if a nonprofit like the Western Heritage Museum wants to, that's their prerogative. But I would like, that'd be great if you could give some explanation of how they didn't benefit from this. I, I think they should start teaching a course at law school, so they can come up with that theory.
Is that, do you want those removed as well as the Mecca ones, then, until...
Well, I'd go with what Mr. Lorenz recommends, I guess.
And what we're doing here is, we're writing this down for accounting purposes, but we are not stopping our collection efforts. So, we're going to continue to work with the county attorney to pursue collection on it.
Oh.
We hired, we hired Vito to deal with him.
So, we don't, this is just a report?
This is just a report. There's no vote required, I guess.
No vote, okay. All right. Teresa?
Teresa, York County Attorney's Office. Just for clarification, our office has been asked to follow up collections on the Durham Western Heritage Museum, and also Mecca as well. And so, we're just waiting for the paperwork to come in, and it's been assigned.
Great. And I understand, I mean, I'm not looking for 100% payment, that life isn't that way. Sometimes we just can't collect all of our bills. So, I'm not critical of this. This is not a bad thing at all. The amount's pretty small. So, it's not a big deal. We all like to get every penny we're owed, but that's not how life is sometimes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, and this is a question for Commissioner Boyle. Vito, you said we hired Vito. Is that an Irish name?
I guess I should have said, "We're going to hire Mick to do this." Hope I didn't offend anybody. I've got an Italian son-in-law in trouble. I usually do, you're right.
Well, okay, no other questions or comments? We'll move to the administrative services. There's one item, a resolution to declare an emergency pursuant of the Purchasing Act and to waive the bidding requirements for the purchase of the following items at the Community Mail Health Center, which will be funded through a facility safety grant from Region 6. And the two items are, one, an upgrade to cameras and other security monitoring equipment in the amount of $27,870 by Hyberion. And item two, a replacement for doors in the amount of $16,740 by the Nebraska Iowa Door Services, Inc. And is there a motion to approve?
Are we declaring an emergency first?
Yes. And then, will these be brought back, then, Diane, or can we do it?
We can do it, right?
Diane Carlson, Deputy County Administrator. I think you can do it all in one motion, based on the way it's worded on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, good.
So, we're declaring a motion and approving these purchases to move forward?
I'll second that, if no one has.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Next is the Child and Youth Services Committee. There's a couple of contracts, one approval of the amendment to the agreement with the Nebraska Family Support Network. Chris, did you have anything you want to add to that? Okay. It's just extending the time of the contract.
Time, what are we doing? I didn't get a chance to read this. We're extending the length of the contract?
One and two are contracts we've already approved, and, which is giving more time to extend the, the funding, out-of-grant funding, more time to extend it.
Okay, so how much time are we doing? What are we doing?
Till December, I think.
Till the end of the year.
It was from, till June, and now it goes till the end of December, now the end of the year, December.
Okay, well, I, I've been a pretty strong critic of this organization, and I hope we...
No, not this one.
Not this one? Isn't this the one?
Nope.
This is why we shouldn't be signing documents while we're...
Nope, you're good on this one.
This group presented to us, and they signed off good. They came, they came, presented to us, and you signed off on them.
Remember Saturday Night Live? Roseanne, Roseanne Adana? Never mind. Roseanne, Roseanne Adana?
If so, I'd like to move a, approve of one, of one and two.
And two is the approval of the amendment to the agreement with family first, and you're okay with that one, too?
Okay, yes. Thank you. I know, you would.
Motion passes.
Next is the, item three, resolu, I didn't hear what you said.
Mike, now she says, "Just kidding."
Item three, resolution, resolution approving the 12-month extension of the Monahan-Guardiam at Lydham contract. And item four is, goes with it as well, but a separate one, but we can talk about them together, is a resolution approving the amendment to the Monahan-Guardiam at Lydham contract that includes a 12-month extension and requires more detailed invoices. And please know... And please know that on the resolutions in your books, the name should be Maureen and not Laura on the resolutions. So, Commissioner Boyle?
I read comments by the attorney, Ms. Monahan, and she does have reservations, and she objects to the language that requires detailed information on the basis that it violates her ethical responsibility to keep matters confidential in dealing with her clients. I think what I'd like to do to try to settle this is to, in this contract, put language that asks Ms. Monahan and her firm to comply with the rules of the juvenile court in itemizing her billings. And I think by doing that, it gets consistent with other providers, and we're not asking her to do something that we're not going to win because she's not going to do it. So, we need to find ways to, a way to get an accounting as if she were an individual lawyer and accounting to the court. We need the same information or access to that information. So, maybe she needs to be filing that with the juvenile court, and then we'll have the responsibility of getting it from juvenile court. Maybe that's the way we settle this disagreement. Because I know that, I did see her over the weekend, and we had a brief discussion about this, and she's not going to do what we want her to do, so we'll have to get the information another way. And I think we can, through the courts. So, it's going to be, probably talk to juvenile court, figure out how to get the administration, how to get the information we want.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. First off, she has been providing the information that the board has asked for, so to say she's not getting us what we want isn't quite necessarily accurate. We do have two contracts outstanding. Obviously, the larger contract is with Tom and Contro and Associates. And what we're doing here, if we should pass Resolution Three, which I intend to move, we will be coordinating these two. We'll put them on the same timeframe. From what I've learned through this process is, we really can't ask for much information from these attorneys. It's not our job to provide the oversight of these attorneys. It's the court's job. We need to be better coordinated with the courts. We need to sit down with them and say, "Who's responsible for what? How do we make sure everything is going as smoothly as the public would like and still protect the confidentiality of the clients?" And that's what I'm hoping we can do in this year. I would really like to set up some kind of group. I would like to see somebody from the state auditor's office included. I would like to see Mike Dorniki, our internal auditor included, and sit down with a working group and say, "Who does what in providing the oversight of these?" It's not our job to oversee these contracts. It's the court's job. But we need to make sure the courts are doing what we hope they are. So, I believe if we do just approve this one-year contract without the amendment asking for more detailed invoices, that before that year is up, we can figure out in agreement with, hopefully, Ms. Monahan and Mr. Contro, that we can all move forward together and know who's doing what for oversight here, and that we're better coordinated with the juvenile courts. Because I think most of what we are wanting to do is actually their responsibility. So, I'd like to see us just approve this contract, keep things going as is while we try to figure out how can we move forward, and then at the end of the year, we move forward with both contracts simultaneously. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
I think that's a good idea. I can certainly live with that. It probably makes a lot of sense because it's time to really hone in on what it is we want. And that's my real question here. What is it, what do we want? Are we, we're not looking for the names of the clients. Are we looking to try to verify that when we get a bill for the lump sum, that there are meetings that have been attended and so forth? I think that's what we're after, some kind of accountability, if you say that. And that's totally different than what we have with her because she has a, doesn't have that kind of a contract with us. So, we may have to, I think during the year and talking during the year, we may end up having to go to a contract, as we do with Mr. Contro, that spells things out a lot differently, that tells us what's going on. So, if that's what we want to know, and who's going to look at that, all that, I don't know. And apparently, we're not looking at it now.
Commissioner Craft?
Ms. Monahan, would you mind coming up? I'd like to hear your comments. And I'd like to comment that I agree with what Commissioner Duda and Commissioner Boyle have said. Your take?
You know, I think Commissioner Boyle summarized it fairly well, that if we provided an itemized bill per case to the clerk's office, that makes it public record. It would create a two-tiered system in which children who are not, who are appointed guardians of light them outside of our contract get confidentiality, and those who are appointed under our contract would not. And I can't speak for the judiciary, but I think the risk you run is that they would unappoint us from all of our cases, and you guys would still be paying us. I'm sure that's not what you want. I think Commissioner Boyle has a good suggestion. The problem with perhaps adopting that language today is, I think you need the acquiescence of the judiciary. I don't think the county board can bind the judiciary, and I certainly can't. Even though I can agree that we'll provide all that stuff to the juvenile court administrator, I don't, I don't think anyone from their offices here, and I still think it would need one of the judges to sign off on it anyway. We're, if you want a contract that says, if you want an amendment that says we provide aggregate, X number of hours this month spent on meetings, X number of hours this month on court hearings, we could do that. I will say that there would be an additional cost to putting that information together and submitting it to the board, which, we haven't done it for June, so July would have to look different than, say, August and going forward, if that's something you want to do.
Okay, and I am satisfied with where we're at for the coming year. I don't think we need that aggregate because it's not really something we're going to be using. It's not something we're going to value and get value from, that I can see, although I haven't analyzed it. But I do know that Resolution Four, if we add an amendment that one of the signers doesn't agree to, then we don't have an agreement.
That's correct.
And since you don't agree to it, I would just make the motion that we go with number three.
Second.
I do want to make a couple of comments, and the, I find it kind of ironic that we're approving a contract, which using Commissioner Duda's own words, is that we have no oversight of that contract. I mean, this makes no sense to me whatsoever. And the comments about additional cost, you know, we pay this contract a flat fee, and it's our contract, so I'm not knocking the contract E or R, whichever that is. We pay, contractually pay, $24,885 per month for a group of cases, up to 315 cases. Over the course of the 10 years that I have data for, that 315, 316 cases or more has happened one time over a 10-year contract, contractual period. They're averaging 300, 310, 307 for years 10, 11, and 12. So, when there is comments made about additional cost in complying with the detailed billing, I guess I'm just not buying that argument. But what I'm more concerned about is that, again, years back, we had a contract with Youth Links that was for a bed to hold our runaways and chronic missing youth. And on a 30-day period, that bed wasn't used for five days, but we paid $207 a day, and this board went ballistic over that. And so, now we have a contract that's been in existence for many, 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 many years, and it's never hit the 315 cases, but yet we're paying this flat fee of $24,000 with no accountability. And I'm not saying, I'm not trying to place blame on anybody. I'm just trying to say that if we don't have the accountabilities or the authority in place to do these contracts, then why would we even continue to do them? I understand the cost. I understand all of that. But to just acquiesce that this is the way it is, and we're not going to ask or, I guess in some regards, demand accountabilities for what we're paying for, that's not what this board is supposed to be doing. I mean, these are tax dollars. We're spending nearly $2 million on these two contracts alone. And yes, it is an issue that I think we need to continually work with on the legislature to have them understand that we're ordered to pay but have no accountabilities as to really what we're paying for. And so, I have really, really severe problems with continuing a contract that we have, again, our, not my words, but I'm hearing words, saying that we have no jurisdiction, no accountability, no way of account, demanding accountability for. So, again, this is a lot of money, and I'm not going to support moving forward with the status quo on this. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I think there is a fix to this, and it is a contract that we wrote, and I don't think we really gave it the kind of thought, at least I didn't, when we were adopting it. So, I think there's a way to fix it, and I think the way to fix it is to do what Commissioner Duda suggested and supported by Commissioner Craft, and that is to continue it as flawed as we believe it is, and I do believe it's flawed. But I think the way to fix it is, what I was suggesting earlier, is that lawyers who are not in our contract, and you read the list when we sign it, when it goes through, and we know who they are, they can't just give a bald dollar amount to the court and get paid. They have to explain to the court what it is they did, and whether they attended a court hearing, or whether they did something, something of this nature. So, the court has that information, and they decide, the judge decides, "This is what happened, and yes, we'll pay that, pay that." And if there's any dispute, which there seldom is, I don't believe there is, then it's discussed somehow with, I suppose, with the court administrator. But that's, I think, how we get it fixed, that we mimic what's going on with individual lawyers. And then the information is with the court, and whether or not we need or should go look at it is another issue. But if the court's satisfied that lawyers who are under contract with us are complying with the law and representing the young people, in some cases, the parents adequately, then we pay the bill. And that's another thing, kind of parallels what we talked about last week, what I talked about. We need to recognize our limitations, and this is one of them. We can't get into a file and start looking at whether or not Ms. Monahan represented Jane Doe on a certain date, and what was done, that's just beyond our obligations to pay the bill. That is really what the law says. We have no other, and we're just trying to make sure that what we're paying is being done. I trust both of our contractors. Maybe that's something that, I mean, I've known her most of her life, and I know that she's honest and ethical, and the same with Mr. Contro. I've known him for a long time. And they are, they are people, I'm happy they're our contractors. They're good lawyers, and they're honest. But somewhere along here, we want some kind of accountability, and we should, to the taxpayers that what we're paying for, we're getting. There are limitations to what we can know, but we still have the right to know that a hearing was conducted and these lawyers were present. So, I think that's where we head after, I would like to see this contract extended without trying to write language at the 11th hour to get this into a contract. I think it just doesn't work. We need to have our staff talk to juvenile court and ask their assistance in what, how do we accomplish, and what is it that we really want? You know, we're not trying to be nosy. We don't want it to be public. It shouldn't be. So, that's where I am, and I think that's where we head, and it's a much more measured course, I think.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes, and Commissioner Boyle, I agree. What we're paying for, we are getting because we're getting what is required in the terms of the contract that this board wrote. Having run and owned a business for a mere 40 years, I do know there are costs associated with breaking out in accounting, just like there is in farming and keeping track of everything. Wouldn't it be nice, Commissioner Duda, if you didn't have to do your accounting at the end of the year or on a monthly basis?
I'm married well, so I get off pretty early.
But to try to force a change in an existing contract that we'd like to extend for continuity and for functionality and for cost benefit, to be very honest, there is an additional cost, and we would have to renegotiate the terms of the payment. And I have no idea what that additional cost would be, how much bookkeeping would be required. But the accountability is, Ms. Monahan, could you come up to the microphone? Your accountability is to the courts, is it not?
Correct.
And if a judge doesn't like what you're doing, what happens?
I get removed from the case. Any attorney can be removed from the case by the judge.
That's what I thought.
If they appoint them, yes.
So, you need to be accountable to the judges?
Correct.
And to the judiciary. And you apparently have been because I don't think you've been removed from too many cases.
Occasionally, it tends to be issues where there are conflicts of interest, those type of issues.
And that's not necessarily a fault issue, it's a conflict issue. And that's understandable. So, again, I see no reason that this time, you're in the grand scheme of things, is not intermountable. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
You know, can I ask Ms. Monahan to come to the podium again?
I keep sitting down, it's my mistake.
Yes, that's right. I wanted to ask you, when you work on a case, when you work on a case, do you file anything with the juvenile court? And if you do, what is it that you file?
What we file is, we get appointed, and the, as I'm sure you've had these answers a lot of times, the computer requires us to put X in to make it work. So, they always appoint us, first of all, as, it used to be under my name and my bar number, and then an attorney in my group would file an entry of appearance that goes to all parties, including the county attorney. It also goes to the clerk's office and the juvenile court administrator's office.
Right.
Now, it's under, because we have the changeover to justice, it's now Monahan, number five. I don't know why it's that, it just is. But it's the same process. We file that entry of appearance, or if an attorney leaves our group, then we do what's called a substitution of counsel. Again, that requires us to give notice to all parties. The county attorney is a party on all cases. So, we give that. But unless I'm filing a motion or something court, in the course of my representation, I don't file anything additional.
Okay, do you file your bill with juvenile court?
No. And there's a, in Douglas County, in juvenile court, the rules are, you do not file your bill, you submit it to the juvenile court administrator.
Okay, I guess that's what I meant. But do you submit that to the juvenile court administrator?
Yes. My understanding, and this is from discussions with them, with the court administrator's office, is that the rules are, you submit your motion, which is, I have spent X amount of money, or, you know, I have incurred this for billing, and it just states the amount in that motion. It is signed by the attorney. When an attorney signs it, you are swearing it to be true. You attach a bill per their rules, and they have someone who looks over everything, and she is very, quite the stickler. Most of the attorneys fear getting correspondence back from her. And it's in three-minute increments.
It's what?
In three-minute increments.
Okay.
It's $6 to $5 an hour, whatever the three minutes is. You bill in three-minute increments. That particular bill, the judge, it's my understanding, is the judge sees the motion, the bill, and then there's, we also prepare an order for the judge to sign, although they also have a pro forma order. The judge reviews it and signs the order, and that order then is sent to the clerk's office. The bill itself is kept in a confidential file in the juvenile court administrator's office.
Okay, so the judge is looking at what you did and what you billed. Is that correct?
That is my understanding, yes. I have never directly asked a judge. It seemed like an odd question.
Well, I think that is, I think that's getting someplace because this, the work that you do is not some big blank amount of money that you are accounting for, the hours that you spend, and the judge is looking at it and saying, "Yes, she was here, and yes, this attorney was here, and this is what happened." So, I'm a lot more comfortable. I thought that was what was happening, but is it possible for you to show us a bill, obviously redacting any information that would, you know, the person's name and file numbers and so forth, and the judge... so forth and the judge's name and all that? Just show us what it looks like when someone on your staff, you yourself or one of your attorneys, files this bill for services. Can you show that with us to, I think it would be enlightening?
Well, we right now don't file that. We do not currently file that because of the flat fee arrangement with the county. We do not file that. But an attorney appointed privately?
Yeah.
Say I was appointed to appoint a parent, which is outside the contract, you know, say.
Right.
Or a 3B, a delinquency or something like that. That is, that is the process.
Okay, well, let me ask you.
We don't submit that because of the contract.
I thought you said you just did that.
No, no, that is the process if you are appointed privately. That is not the process under the contract.
Okay, so under the contract, you don't submit any itemized bill of any kind to the judge?
No.
Okay, well, that's.
All we do is submit a list to the clerk's office for processing.
Now, what's that again?
We submit a list to the clerk's office for processing. And it's just a list of cases, our administrative list.
A list of cases, but not what you're doing?
Correct.
Okay. Well, that's what we want to see changed.
Sure. And, you know, I have a, I don't have a problem with that as long as it fits within my duties, any attorney's duties.
Okay, so you wouldn't have a problem if we asked you to do that to the judge, just as if you were handling a case that was outside the contract, right?
Right, but as I said, you know, the judges aren't here, so we don't know that they'd agree to it.
Okay, well, that's what we have to work on and see what they would accept. The other thing too is that I don't agree with you on additional costs in submitting these bills. I just, being billed for preparing a bill kind of makes me a little bit, at least, you know, I don't do much itemization of law practice anymore, but when I did, I didn't dare do that. I figure out some other way to, you know, get an extra five minutes someplace on a phone call or something to recover. But you just have to, your billing has to cover all your expenses. I mean, you can't pad things, and I know you're not, and I didn't either, but you have to, that's just a part of doing business. That's the cost of doing business, is giving us a bill that we understand and a client. So that's where we're headed as well. I just don't think you need to, we're not going to be paying you extra for that. I can't see that happening.
Does anyone have it? I want to sit down again.
Thanks. Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Monahan.
Sure.
Well, and again, I can count and I heard the conversations that happened, but, you know, again, I really don't see why the judges would have to approve those billings because they're already getting those billings from all the court-appointed attorneys. We heard from a couple last week that said they provide this detailed billing. The contractor themselves said they provided outside of our contract. So it's nothing new, it's nothing crazy, you know, 11th hour, trying to negotiate in, not in good faith. This has been talked about for, well, let's see, Commissioner Kraft said three years, it's been talked about for three years, that we need more accountabilities. And so again, I'm all for continuing to work because I think that this will continue to move forward, but I think it's wrong. I think we're doing a disservice to the taxpayers in continuing a contract where we have, we've all said, we all agree on that, that we have no accountability or no authority in oversight of this contract. And again, additional costs for doing detailed billings can, in my opinion, be picked up pretty easily on that flat fee because the number of cases, again, have not been hit in the majority of the time, except for one year, that we've had the contract. So this still needs a lot of work and a lot of conversation and I'm not going to be supporting moving forward just the status quo. Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. There's a great many things in the courts that we have very little oversight over. That's the nature of county government. Back when we were spending in excess of $3 million a year on out-of-home placements, I know that really bothered a lot of people. And then every once in a while, you'd see a home in there that had some, I mean, someplace, a facility that maybe had something questionable in their own story. And that made us very uncomfortable, that we're paying to send juveniles to facilities that we didn't sign off on first, that we don't send somebody down to check out the facility and all that. Wasn't our bailiwick. Our job was to pay the bills. And that's the same here. And golly, I just think the idea of moving forward with the courts to figure it out, who can be doing what, I just don't see another logical way to try to move forward. To move forward with an extension that the contractor has not agreed to and says is unethical, I don't get the point. Thank you.
And again, it's already being done, so I don't see how it could be unethical, but we'll leave it at that. There's been a motion and a second to approve item three. Please vote.
I'd like to speak after the vote.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Boyle?
I guess I pushed it too late. Sorry.
There you go. Motion passes.
What I would like to see is an immediate contact with the juvenile court administrator to find out how we, the people here in the audience or in our staff, you've heard what our concerns are, and to try to figure out how it is that we get something very similar, if not similar, exactly the same. As an individual, a lawyer who's not under contract, what information that person files, that attorney files with the juvenile court, we want to, I think, we want to see the same thing with our contracted people so that there can be accountability. That's what we're after. I think Commissioner Borgerson's points are exactly right, so we don't really have a disagreement. We need to get it shaped up and that's what it is. So I'm looking right at you, Ms. Carlson, so, and you can pull in anybody you need to get it done. But that's, Commissioner Borgerson's prerogative, not mine, to suggest that, but I would respectfully suggest that she do that.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, I'd like to speak briefly on community services. I received a permit change from Waste Management regarding the Pheasant Hill landfill and I forwarded it by scanning it and each of you should have received a copy this morning. So, yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I think I understand it. I gave a copy to Kent Holmes and I'll make sure I understand it, but I think we all should.
Where was this? What'd you get?
From the Nebraska Department Environmental Services.
This morning?
I got it a few days ago, I read it this morning.
Okay.
And it was scanned to all the commissioners.
Thanks.
We were not finished with our child and youth services.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There was still another item, item four. And I will be willing to withdraw this resolution with the understanding that we work, as Commissioner Boyle pointed, with staff to figure out a way to get more accountabilities because, again, I can count and understand there's not the support for that accountability to be placed in this contract. So I think we need to work on that though.
Thank you.
With that, we will move to human resources. We have a weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. If there's no questions or comments. Weekly C A L report on staff assaults, Commissioner, or Ms. Carlson?
There's nothing to report.
Legislative issues, there is one, and this is actually Commissioner Boyle's name should be on this, he requested that I place this on the agenda. And it's a resolution supporting the National Association of Counties in its current efforts to achieve Congress's reauthorization of the Moving Ahead for Progress in the 21st Century Act and to provide a long-term solution for the Federal Highway Trust Fund. And again, it's one that, from the national level, they're moving around to the local levels to ask us to support and send our support. So what we would do is, if this passes, we would send the resolution on to National Naco. So are there any questions or comments on this? Commissioner Boyle?
Only that I'd like it sent to our congressional delegation.
As well, okay.
Please.
Yep. Was there a motion and a second? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Any further questions or comments? Please vote.
I would like to take a moment to thank Marcos for getting this put together. Very helpful.
Yes, absolutely.
Motion passes.
The only thing, other thing I have for legislation is as we, there was a really good editorial in Sunday's paper that Commissioner Tusha and I were also at the Naco Board meeting and we talked about this, that Senator Crawford, as well as Senator Campbell, have really taken hold of the issue of these unfunded mandates on counties and the shifting of the cost, basically, from the state to the counties. And I was very, very impressed with Mr. Geithner Simmons and his editorial work on this piece. It's complicated and spent a lot of time talking about it and actually asked to further our conversations as we move forward because there's lots more detail to be written about and they agreed to do so. So I was very excited that they saw the need for the legislature, not so that they, you know, anybody bullies them to say this is what you have to do, but so that they become very, very aware of what their actions have, the domino effect that it has on counties. And so again, we're not only with the editorial, but we will be conversing with Senator Crawford. She's really taken an active role in trying to really, really understand what all those pieces are and what they mean. There is going to be conversation about the urban and rural, how it affects all of us the same but differently. And so I think we need to seize this opportunity to really educate. And if you don't mind, I would like to try to work with staff to form some type of an educational package that we can present in a much more succinct manner to the legislators, both those that are there. Because again, you're talking about some legislators that haven't been there very, very long and are hit with huge amounts of issues at one time, let alone the incoming senators. So I think it's important that we have something very, very easy to read and follow that explains our positions and our roles. So if that's okay, I'll work on that. But again, I think it's a great opportunity to seize upon and I am looking through my rosy-tinted glasses right now on this one because I see it as a huge opportunity for us to repair some of the fractured relationships that have occurred the last few years with the legislature, so, in the state. So I'm excited about it. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I want to congratulate you. I don't know how that editorial was, how you managed to get that done, but the comments were right on point. It was well-written. It was such a good editorial, frankly, I thought that you wrote it and I told you that. It was really, you know, we are constantly given these duties by the state and it always, if we're not careful, it will prompt an increase in property taxes that these things, and I've told that to the governor firsthand, when he usually stands up and points his fingers and says, "You need to cut spending." And I always say, you know, "You need to quit sending us things to do, that's all. This is what triggers the cost." But anyhow, I think you made great statements. And one thing that I would like to do, rather than, I hate talking about, I don't approve of us asking for state aid because it really sounds like, hey, give us something that, you know. What I would like to see us do is try to agree on some function of county government that we could ask the state to handle, such as the cost of guardian ad limes, something that's tangible, that they can really get, they have a handle on the cost. And, you know, in some states, it would be a radical change for us, but in some states, license plates are issued from the state capitol, not from localities, which changes things entirely for us. You know, the last time I got my driver's license renewed, it was over the internet and came from Lincoln, nothing to do with Omaha. So I think there's a lot of things we can ask for, but I think the first thing is guardian ad limes fees, that's such, to me, and I apologize for pushing the button and talking all the time. I do this at the risk of Commissioner Kraft reaching over and pulling the wires on them all, so.
Can we do that?
Commissioner Tusha?
Yeah, to back up what Commissioner Borgerson said, we have a Naco conference call with Senator Crawford on July 23rd about the unfounded mandate. So if anybody has any comments or questions or suggestions, please forward it to us before that time so that way we can include that in on the conference call.
What was the date again?
July 23rd.
Okay.
Commissioner Rogers?
I know it's outside the scope of it, but, you know, if the opportunity comes, you know, the, in addition to that, we're in a situation in the state that's no different from any other. If you go to Oregon, Portland, and Multnomah County are bigger than the rest of the state. If you go to Chicago, it's Cook County. And a lot of those places, some of them, they have home rule counties. It's not in the context of it, but if it's the idea that she talks about, it's probably one that should be proposed because, you know, quite frankly, a lot of the angst comes with trying to adjust for us and we're not in the same situation as anybody is. So it may, it probably caused some angst for it, but a home rule county is something that people have went to to kind of take us out of that mix and let us play a little more.
Commissioner Morgan?
Commissioner Borgerson, I'm just wondering if it would be a good idea, and you can think about it, I don't need an answer now, and some of the other commissioners can give you their input. You just wonder if it would be helpful, we've done the breakfast out at the alum center in the fall, November, whatever, just wondering if sometime in August, before they start campaigning to invite the candidates that are running, some may be seeking reelection, some are not going to be there, but to invite the senators and maybe have a little friendly get-together and talk about some of these mandates that are sent to us by the state and just to mention that, not have a long one, but just a brief breakfast out there at the alum center. You can think about it. If there's input from the others, that it's a good idea. We figure out when and invite them. And it's kind of a quieter time for them and see when it might be done in August or something.
That's an excellent idea and actually blends with, again, I think we need to be a little bit more proactive in kind of educating them about counties.
Right.
And this would be one of those, you know, to expand on our county government 101-type educational piece that we did for the community. Do that and build on what the responsibilities are because, again, them running, we would like to know where, not only educate them, but have that conversation with them. So I think that's a great idea.
And if you decided to have Sarpy County join us and they're on board, hey, might be a good invitation.
Conversation, yep.
Okay.
Great, we'll work on that. And Commissioner Boyle, and I agree that the G A L, when we were at the Naco meeting, one of the other commissioners from outstate Nebraska came up to me and talked about the cost and unaccountability that there is on the G A L system and what it's costing their counties. And again, it's the same issue, but they come, they have a little different perspective of it because they have a hard time getting attorneys to be the G A Ls, which leads to the conversation that I think we have to have, and that is, do the G A Ls have to be attorneys? I about got booted out of the room when I brought that up at our meeting during the interim study that Senator Campbell is doing and I was invited to attend. But honest to goodness, it has to be a conversation. It's not anything that's being pulled out of left field that's done in other areas. I like Commissioner Boyle's idea that maybe we blend that with an attorney so it's a more team approach. But again, the conversation about having to have G A Ls have more training, we're training lawyers to be social workers or case managers and that's ridiculous. And so again, we have to kind of put our, we just have to look at the system a little bit differently and see whether or not we can make it better and more cost-effective. And so G A L definitely would be one that I know across the state, they would be interested in pursuing. So we'll continue to work on that. So with that, if there are- So with that, if there aren't any other legislative items, we do have need for an executive session for.
For litigation.
Litigation purposes. Second. Please vote. Claire used to all the time.